Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight for the candidate forum for the Albany School Board seats. I'm Dr. Sharon Goldfarb from the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse nor oppose candidates nor political parties. The League participates in advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as a ballot measure. The forum tonight is being presented by the education arm of the League. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under the ground rule set for this forum. The League is very proud of our history of civil discourse and nonpartisan forums. This is an educational event, not a debate. Before we get started, there are some details to review that will help you interact with the session. Microphones are muted for everyone except the candidates and the moderator. Candidates will stay on screen for the entire forum and will mute until it is their turn to speak. You, the audience, can submit questions in the Q and A box. Please don't use the discussion box, use the Q and A box. For our question sorters to review and pass on to the moderator. Not all questions will be picked. Some were pre-sent and some of the ones you asked may already be in the questions. We are recording this forum and will be posting it to the website and on our YouTube channel for the broader community to access. We have one form to present in this session. This will be for the position of the Albany Board of Education. There are four candidates running for the two positions on the school board. They are Veronica Davidson, Brian Eldoss, Jolene Gossman, and Dana Inkless. Albany uses proportional ranked choice voting, otherwise referred to as ranked choice voting. In this race, you will have five rankings available. This means you can rank the candidates in your order of preference. During the counting, your vote will find its way to the most preferred candidate that can win or that can come closest to winning. Because of this, you do not need to vote strategically. You can rank the candidates you love first, like second, like third, and so on, without fear that voting for your favorite will cause your last favorite to win. The only error you can make is giving more than one candidate the same ranking as it invalidates your vote. So rank it up and enjoy your power as a voter. To win one of the two school board seats, a candidate must earn more than one-third of the votes. The City of Albany will be holding a ranked choice voting information session webinar, both in person at City Hall and a virtual Zoom on Tuesday, October 15th at 6:00 PM. It will last approximately two hours. Information can be found at www.albanyca.org/rcp. All candidates were invited to participate in this forum. Candidates who are not present were given the option to provide a two-minute statement to be read by the monitor. The second forum this evening will be for the Albany City Council seats and it begins at 7:30. You can still register for this by going to our website, l w v b a e dot org. We will be handling questions for the candidates in the following manner. Questions for this format have been solicited in advance from the community and for our local League members. We have screened the questions to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. The order of answering the questions will alternate and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. The candidates have grown, well, I actually went into a random selection software and I have the order of the candidates. But we will start with a statement from Jolene Gossman, who is not able to participate in tonight's thing, tonight's forum. So let me begin, and I also want to pick out how I randomly selected them. So you guys know when you go, and I'm sorry, I thought I had it right in front of me, but the way it's gonna go is, I was hoping not to have this happen, is Dana first, Veronica second, and Brian third. Okay, so this is the statement of Jolene Gossman. "My name is Jolene Gossman and I am running for Albany School Board. I've lived in Albany for five years now, and during that time, we founded a community that has become our family, formed new traditions, started new chapters, and the most exciting recent development is that my family of three has become a family of four. I love this city and I'm proud to call it our home. I have also seen areas within our communities, and specifically within our schools, that I would want to help create positive change within. One of the main reasons I am running is because Albany is a hub of diversity. This can be seen through the various parent engagement groups, clubs within our school, and around the broader community. I want to help uplift the varied and diverse voices within our city. I especially want to make sure that our marginalized communities are seen and heard. I want to make sure the needs of our POC communities are heard and fulfilled, and that our LGBTQIA+ students are protected and celebrated, and that our disabled community is granted the respect and resources, not just to get by, but to excel. As it stands now, attendance for board meetings remains fairly low in viewership, leading to decisions being made without as much input from our constituents. We must ensure that there is more outreach between the board and the community. I would love to be part of that and help build a board that is conscientious of our schools' diversities and find a way not only to celebrate our community's multicultural makeup, but to help Albany thrive." This concludes Miss Gossman's statement. And now we will go on to our candidates' introduction. They will each have two minutes. Dana, can we start with you?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Dana Inkless, and I've been a proud Albany resident for almost 20 years. My family, like many others, chose Albany for the outstanding schools and close-knit community. Both of my kids, ages 14 and 16, have been enrolled in Albany schools since kindergarten. Since that time, I have been very active in the schools. I've served as room parent, auction chair, classroom volunteer for math and PE. I was the PTA president at the middle school for two years, and I am currently the secretary for the Albany Music Fund. All of these roles have given me valuable insight into the inner workings of our schools, fundraising efforts, the needs of our teachers and our students. Professionally, I started my career as a counselor at a youth guidance center in Southern California, working with incarcerated minors. I went on to earn a master's degree in public policy. After I relocated to the Bay Area, I transitioned into the tech industry, and I've spent about the last 25 years managing large tech projects and operational teams with various operational roles, both here and in Asia. Most recently, my position was as Director of Process and Integration at the Clorox Company. With that, I feel I bring an extensive amount of experience in budgeting, communication, problem solving, and change management. Albany is navigating a lot of change right now with the appointment of a new superintendent and the need for a new chief business officer, as well as ongoing budget challenges. I believe I have a lot of skills and experience that can really help guide the community. After that, a little bit about me personally, if elected, I plan to take an honest and direct approach. I am very direct, as people say. I look forward to collaborating with teachers and parents and staff. I am comfortable making hard decisions. I know that's part of the role, and I value accountability, transparency, and inclusion. So those are the values that would guide my service. Thank you.
And Veronica, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. So I am seeking reelection for the Albany Unified School District Board of Education. I am at the completion of a four-year term. I started teaching in Albany and as a par educator and then as a first-grade teacher, and then took a break from teaching during the COVID-19 pandemic and ran for the school board in order to help see some of the changes that really needed to be made to fruition. During my time on the school board, we have constructed two schools. We have redone our field at the high school. We have installed HVAC at all of our sites. We have completed a facilities master plan for all of our needs. We have passed a new parcel tax. We have also put in place an environmental action plan, which I worked closely with that committee on, and we've started already checking off some of the steps and implementations as part of that. We have also had many shifts and changes with reopening schools, with now this superintendent shift, scheduling changes, negotiations, et cetera. And I have in that time gotten our board meetings down to their sort of suggested 180 minutes. So we now have effective and efficient board meetings that are best for all involved and increased our communication with the community. So I look forward to continuing those projects. We have a few things that are still in the middle of a project, and I would like to see them through to completion, and that is why I am seeking reelection. I would also be one of the few members of our board who has had this length of tenure and can be sort of a bridge from what has been to what will be. So thank you for your time and your vote.
Thank you, Veronica. And Brian, take yourself off mute, and we'll hear your introductory statement.
Absolutely. I know it looked like I was talking during Vani's statement, but I promise I was listening. My daughter's getting ready for her first basketball practice, so she's nervous, and I'm like helping her get ready. So I apologize for that. My name is Brian Dawes. I served on the Albany Board of Education from 2018 to 2022. We did a lot of things during that time, introducing a breakfast program that allowed all students in the district to eat breakfast for free. And then the state Laker adopted that same model, including lunch as well, which was awesome for all students. Also during that time, I had the honor of participating in the hiring process of Dr. Frank Wells. I miss him every day. He was a great superintendent and a better friend. About me, when I first got to Albany, 10 years, maybe a little over 10 years ago, my daughter was in elementary school. I decided to be an involved parent, so I was the president of the site council at Marin. We started the Black Parent Advisory Group. I was one of the founding members along with my wife. Then I went on to be on the PTA for each site. I now have four daughters, and they are scattered around the district, and I participate in every one of their activities, field trips, and I'm proud to say that. My mom's been a teacher for 37 years. My wife was a teacher for 10 years, and I was actually a PE teacher when we met at the school that she was teaching. So that was how we met one another. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve on the board again. We got a lot of things done, but there's a lot more work to do.
Thank you so much. And now we're gonna start with the actual questions. And again, you have one minute for each question, and we're gonna go in the same order that we did the introductions. The first question is, what will be your top priorities within the first year if you are elected or reelected? Dana?
Yeah, it's a great question. So I see there being three sort of top immediate issues. One I mentioned is the onboarding of a new superintendent and a new chief business officer. Both of those are really critical positions. I've heard from the community a little bit that certain things have fallen. It's been a little bit hard, I think, without that leadership. And bringing those two on board and really creating a vision for where we're gonna go is really important. Second is the budget. We need to really think about ways to do more with less. It's a common problem. Obviously, we don't, schools simply don't have enough money, but there are some things hopefully that we could do, like one is we really need to get kids back in school. I understand it's not great. It's how California does it, but we don't get paid unless kids show up. And lastly, as I see I'm running out of time, I would focus a lot on transparency.
Thank you. And if you want me to repeat the question, just let me know. But Veronica, you're next.
Well, that was well said, and I think it would be similar for me. Our first step is going to be ensuring a smooth transition with our leadership. We did this fairly smoothly with the loss of our superintendent into a transitional leadership model. I would also like to work really hard on that budget. We just had a presentation on it in our last meeting, and there are some areas where I think the board can pay a little bit more attention. We've learned a lot recently about our budget, and we've really tried to increase our advocacy at the state level as well. So I'd like to see that through. And the third thing that I would really like to do, and this is my top priority really, is I'd like to make sure that we're following through on some of the safety recommendations that came from our facilities assessments, and just making sure that our campuses are as safe, as solid as they can be, and ready for kids to be in them.
Okay, and Brian?
Thank you. So my top three priorities would be to bring in a new CBO if that hasn't already been completed by the time that we're elected. I think it's really important to have a knowledgeable person in that position so that you can make informed decisions about the budget. The second thing for me would be to take a look at the Special Education Department, what things are working well, what things can be improved, where are we currently, how are those students doing, and how can we improve the education there? The third thing would be to involve the community in the board's decisions. I remember during my time on the board, the community was really involved. I remember the meetings. There were a lot of attendees at the meetings, but then also there was a lot of reaching out and asking the community for their input. So I'd really like an opportunity to get back to that on a large scale.
Thank you. Next question. What do you think the current board has accomplished, and what policy areas need more focus? Dana?
So, sorry, okay, I'm off mute. I will say I'm gonna give Vani a lot of credit for leading the reduction in minutes of the meetings. I think we lost a lot of people when the meetings were going on until midnight, and they discussed so many very, very important items. So kudos to Vani and her team. The environmental plan, which I haven't seen in depth, but I've heard quite a bit about it recently, I think is excellent. It is definitely something that we need to focus on. And I understand that it is mostly accomplished, at least what was put down there, even though, of course, we can continue to do that. I also understand that the, under the vision of this current board, the Albany Pool and the ACC both are now out of the red in the green. Not sure how we say it in public world, but that was not the case before. They were bleeding some money. I mean, yeah, bleeding money, and I give them credit for that. So thank you.
Okay, Veronica?
Can I have the question one more time, please?
You bet. What do you think the current board has accomplished, and what policy areas need more focus?
All right, well, one minute is gonna be a real short time on this. Okay, the current board has accomplished, I think, really increased communication and more accessible communication across our district. I think the current board has accomplished really pushing for more equitable circumstances district-wide. We have also worked really hard to get our budget in a place where we could do as much as possible without getting, you know, in that red area. I think we also made sure that our policies were brought up to at least a current level so that we can operate with that, and then we can grow from there. I think our board has also really worked on operating well together and moving the district forward. Things that we can work harder on, I think that we have a lot of room to, you know, bring community response back to us, and the board getting out and seeing what we voted on being put into action.
Thank you. And Brian?
I think the current board has done a great job with maintaining the status quo and kind of keeping things, you know, running well. I think that the areas of improvement would be the equitable outcomes for all students and a focus on that. I think taking the data that we receive as a community, analyzing that, and then implementing programs that are specific to what the data is telling us. And then I think transparency in the decision-making would also be a great opportunity for community input and informed decisions.
Thank you. Third question. One local resident asked how you would address the longstanding, serious concerns about math instruction and the inadequacy of tech equipment and services provided to students and staff in the district. Dana?
So I'll start with the tech issues. That is something I have actually thought a little bit about recently. I think that post-COVID, we handed out a lot of equipment and students were home. I don't know that we made a great transition back on technology. I think that, I don't know if there's somebody who has the capacity in the district or on the board, but I do think that it could be great to bring in a, have a parent group, since we have so many people in this area with technology background, and help us go through and do an assessment of what we have today and what we don't have, what we think we need in the future, and basically help us put together a forward-looking plan. Some of that would include AI. That's coming up everywhere, and there's policies being developed. So I do think that if we could, again, if we don't have the capacity with the district or the board itself, we can bring in some parents to help us with that. The math challenge. So this is a challenge that's been going on for quite some time. I am aware of it. I have two high schoolers. I know that the concerns that are coming, I don't know what's been talked about, though, behind the scenes, and I think it's a situation where I'd really need to sit down with the district and the principals, or the principal and the board, and better understand what has been done so far with the feedback.
Thank you. We're gonna mix it up this time. And can we do Brian? And if you need me to read the question again, I'm happy to do it.
Oh, no. In my house, we talk about math eight days a week, so no need to repeat that question. It's a two-parter. So in terms of the technology part, I think that COVID allowed us to really utilize technology in a major way to continue the education for all students. So I definitely wanna lean on that. I think that there were a lot of parts of the technology that was used that can continue to help students and help parents be involved in the educational process of their student, to kind of keep them on track. In terms of the math department, I think that there's a lot of opportunities there. I'd like to see a really, like a large, I'd like to see a meeting between the elementary school principals, middle school principal, and the high school principal to figure out the transitions there. How is, what are we doing in math at the elementary school level to prepare for middle school, and then what are we doing in middle school to prepare for high school? It should be unison there to, you know, help students get to where they need to be and then evaluate from there.
And Veronica?
So on the technology front, you know, I wanna zoom out a little bit just from like Chromebooks and Student Hands, which I just sent an email about this weekend, that we have some issues we definitely need to assess. But we have made some strides. I think technologically, as a district, for like our classroom tech, we have a long way to go. You know, other districts are doing a lot more to incorporate it. It does have its challenges, but I think that, you know, we can be looking at that and spending as we can on the technology. In terms of math, you know, we had a, we had a whole meeting on this, and then we had a follow-up meeting, and there were steps that were taken. I think this has dropped a tiny bit with our superintendent shift. It's challenging because the role of the board doesn't allow us to get too much into what happens in each classroom, but we can set policy and we can set sort of that higher-level standard. And on that, you know, we are working on the summer bridge program. We just heard about from the elementary schools to middle schools with Eric Mapes at the middle school, and bringing that into the school year more to do, just what Brian Dawes said.
Okay, thank you. What qualifications and experiences would you look for in a school superintendent candidate if you were on the search committee? And let's start with Veronica this time.
We can just watch a couple meetings ago, and we laid these all out. It, I think everyone is looking for somebody who has a vision, somebody who really cares about students first. That was a huge priority of ours. Somebody who sees all students as able to achieve and accomplish their fullest potential, and someone who has been involved in schools, understands how they function, and is able to be a collaborative partner for the community, our labor partners, the board, all of our, all of our teams, and really kind of lead us in a direction and listen to the community. So someone who's able to reflect, but still be a strong leader. I think that we're very fortunate in Albany that we're a desirable place for people to come, and I'm hoping that we get a superintendent who can really reflect the values of our community.
Thank you. And Brian?
I think the qualities that I would, you know, look for in a superintendent are superintendent that, you know, has an inclusive state of mind, making everyone feel welcome. There's always an opportunity there, you know. You know, others might feel less included than some, and so being able to kind of come into that situation and let everybody know that they all belong, that you are happy that they're there. And the second part of it is, you know, believing and truly believing, not just saying it because it sounds good, but truly believing that every student has the ability to excel and achieve at a high level. And then not only believe, but making decisions that reflect that mindset.
Thank you. And Dana?
So I, the first thing I'd be looking for is somebody who really can communicate a clear direction and a vision for Albany. We're a really great community and a great school, and I think that we can thrive to be amazing, and I think it really takes a strong leader to do that. I'd also look for somebody with demonstrated skills that has really done this before, especially around budgeting and, you know, making really hard decisions. It is, it's hard to lead a community and not be willing or able to make a hard decision. Lastly, I really think we, we're a really small community and a small school district, but we struggle with transparency and a lot of open communication. And I think that really comes from the top, and I think we need to bring in somebody who values that and who is willing to communicate the good and the bad, because there are hard decisions that are made and they have to be communicated out into the public. So, yeah, that's what I would look for.
Okay, next question. Can you describe your leadership experience in bringing people together from different perspectives to create sound public policy to address current needs? And with this question, we'll start with Brian. And with this question, we'll start with Brian.
Time on the board when, when decisions.
Hi, Brian.
Time, I should stop because he's frozen.
Why don't we take it to Dana and we'll come back to Brian, okay?
So I have, this is my first time running and I, I mentioned I've been involved in the community for quite a bit, but I haven't actually developed policy. So I'll use an example of something that I did with the PTA. So when I started the P, running the PTA at the middle school after the pandemic and one of the events that had happened in the past was a great event called Cobra Chella, but we didn't think that we could find enough volunteers and many of the parts of Cobra Chella were needed to happen inside. So we got a lot of feedback from the community. Don't do any event if it's not exactly Cobra Chella. Please do an event. We need an event for the community. And so we, we spent a couple of months really going back and forth and debating. How do we do something for the community? How do we do something that honors Cobra Chella? And in the end, we ended up coming up with a completely new event that was really more focused on the students, which in the end was great, I think, because the students had had quite a hard time. And so AMS now has an annual event called the Springs Foray.
Okay. And Brian, let's start fresh with you.
All right. Sorry about that. Not sure what happened. Maybe there's a lot of people doing their homework at the same time right now. Hopefully, fingers crossed. So in terms of the, you know, leadership transparency, you know, getting a community involved. During my time on the board, whenever we had a big decision, we would, you know, put together committees, groups of community members, have these discussions in detail. You know, bring that information together as a whole. And then go over all that information so we go all make informed decisions. We did that on a consistent basis to make sure that we got feedback from everyone involved. Prior to my time on the board and my career, same concept, you know, bringing people together, having conversations about the things that are going well, the things that we can improve, getting feedback from everybody who's involved, including the people that we were serving and then implementing policy changes if needed based on the feedback.
Thank you. And Veronica?
So we, in this last year, we were one of the first districts to begin an ethnic studies program. And of course there were different perspectives on how we should go about that, et cetera. And we really had to listen to all the inputs and come up with the plan that we would do a one year sort of pilot program on what was the most streamlined to implement, but would actually get this out as fast as we could. Very, but very thoughtfully. And so that was one of those times when we really had to listen to all the different inputs and think about what we could do to give everyone a little bit, but still make this happen. We then had to make budget cuts after we passed a parcel tax, which was really challenging because, you know, nobody wants any part of the budget to be cut, particularly after they've just said, we'll pay more and we're going to get raises. And so that was just a really uncomfortable. I mean, I think being a board member is all about making hard decisions in heated moments and being able to think about what is best for the kids at the forefront.
Thank you. So the next question is, how would you direct the superintendent to improve transparency around budgeting and resource allocation? So families are well informed and can participate in decision making, particularly so students with special needs aren't left behind. And since Brian didn't really get to go first last time, let's have Brian go first this time.
Sure. I would direct the superintendent exactly the way that we did direct the superintendent, which is to boots on the ground and go out and hunt for the information. It's really tough to understand what the students truly need from your office. You have to go out to the schools to figure it out. You have to talk to teachers, you have to talk to parents, you have to see the students in action, you have to talk to the students, you have to be involved at every site on every level. I know that it sounds like a lot, but there's a lot of time in the day and there are a lot of days in the school year. So that will be my instruction to, you know, go out, find that information, schedule the time and really get into the weeds of what's happening, why it's happening and how we can fix it.
Thank you. Dana?
Yeah. Could you repeat the question?
Sure. How would you direct the superintendent to improve transparency around budgeting and resource allocation? So families are well informed and can participate in decision making, particularly so students with special needs aren't left behind.
So I do, I, I mentioned, I think transparency is actually one of the areas that we really do need to improve. I, there are a lot of ways that right now the district communicates. And one thing I don't, I don't see a lot of is, I mentioned, I mean, nobody wants to get bad news, but I do think that when you're communicating out, it's a really bright group of parents. And if you give them information, even if it's not what they want to hear, then they can at least move forward with that information. So for example, there were cuts, the high school lost thirteen sections. I only know this because my two kids didn't get periods, seventh periods. And so that type, I would, I would talk to the new superintendent and really go over some of these examples and work with them to figure out, how do we get this information out to parents? Either an email or in forums to really give them an opportunity to hear the details, ask questions, even if it's challenging.
Okay, and Veronica?
Well, just reminder, no one board member can direct the superintendent. So it had to, it would have to be a conversation with the entire board first so that we could give direction as a board so that it would really be representative of all, all the inputs. In that, I would encourage in our conversation that we bring back our budget corner in our board meetings and we really encourage the community to tune into those board meetings and try and have our information stay in that one place. Right now we've got messages coming out from principals, teacher messages, and you know, we've heard that our, our messaging is getting buried in your parent square or your Google Classroom access or your whatever, however you're getting your emails. And so really encouraging the community to continue participating when we can have those discussions. There is only so much time that we can sort of talk about these things and we want to inform everybody and then going back and reviewing it. We've had some really amazing presentations to help explain our budget, et cetera. But also just, you know, encouraging PTA meetings to remind people, hey, let's talk about this budget decision site councils, et cetera.
Thank you. Next question. Facing an unhealthy financial situation, how would you approach the problem and what solutions would you consider? And we'll start with you, Veronica.
Okay, sorry. Can you say that one more time? I was just finishing a thought on the last one in my own head.
Okay, sure. Facing an unhealthy financial situation, how would you approach the problem and what solutions would you consider?
Well, since I've been involved in anything related to school districts and boards, I've always heard budget deficit and deficit spending. And that's something that we're really trying to look at right now to make sure that our district is not continuing a cycle of deficit spending. That said, there are structures that are in place that we just really have no control over, like our state budget, our special education level of funding is never sufficient to provide what's actually needed. And so we're consistently supporting that from the general fund, which has to happen. I would also really advocate and start working on an attendance based funding structure at the state level rather, sorry, enrollment based instead of daily, average daily attendance in their seats. So that we're paying teachers to be there because they have to be there whether their student can be there or not or is sick. And so those are some things that I would really be working on as we're moving forward. And then I would just continue to look at ways that we could offset budget things through health insurance reimbursements, et cetera.
Thank you. And Brian?
Would you mind repeating the question?
No, not at all. Facing an unhealthy financial situation, how would you approach the problem and what solutions would you consider?
Well, if we're being specific about our current situation, I think that the main focus would be to really narrow down and complete the search for a CBO. It's really tough to have conversations about the budget and finances without your chief business officer. The previous CBO that we had was exceptional and did a really good job of explaining where we were so that we could make tough decisions. I think that there's only twenty eight seconds left, so I will end with one of the most important things that I learned as a board member, which is if you do have to make cuts, keep them as far away from the classroom as possible.
Thank you. And Dana?
Yeah, so I, I mentioned this before and I, I'm, I'll be very transparent that I don't know exactly how it could work, but I, I, I was a lifeguard and swimming teacher growing up. I know that pool has a lot of possibilities and I wonder if there would be a way to work with that pool and work with that management and actually bring in more revenue that could be, you know, brought in and help the overall budget. Same thing with the ACC. I, my kids went, went there in TK and there's a lot of opportunity there. So just a different way maybe of thinking about it. I, Bonnie mentioned advocating at the state level. That is a huge, we, we simply don't have enough funding and I do think that there's just a lot of opportunity to work with other, other districts, other communities, other schools to advocate for more funding and including how they're paid. I mean, and how, how the schools are paid in terms of whether it's enrollment or who shows up. But until we do that, we need to get kids showing up post COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. In the last year, Albany High was the subject of a New York Times article involving racist bullying. What has been done and what could be done to improve the culture among students? We start with you, Veronica.
Yeah, well, one of the best things that our former superintendent so rightly did was start a book club right when the new book came out about this very incident. And it really brought together our community to talk about it in ways that I had not heard people talk about it before. It was really, it was uncomfortable and painful, but it was really positive. So I think having more opportunities for our students to come together and talk about difficult concepts is something that we could do if they are facilitated very, very well. We have challenge day for our high schoolers in their sophomore year and I participated in that two years ago and it was a really brilliant experience. So having more of those opportunities and I think also just making sure that everybody understands that our expectations are that we, we take care of each other and you're part of the team and you're part of the community, but you always have a safe and trusted adult that you can go to who will help you to resolve things. So that's what I would, that's what I would work on.
Thank you. And Dana?
Yeah, so it is a tough question and a tough topic. I, I think that Albany has done a lot to bring in discussions about inclusion and equity, bullying and everything that has to do with hate. We've changed our curriculum. We've, we've added safe and inclusive schools. We're sort of justice coordinators at the middle school and the high school. We have the young men of color and young women of color. So I feel like we've done, we've done a lot, but I know that it, it's still out there and I, I struggle with this just with the young kid, the kids that come through my house where there's an intellectual conversation happening and there's structure happening and there's representation happening. But there's still, there is still some gap with kids. I don't know if it's age, I don't know if it's the internet, I don't, I, but I, I think that we need to get down to another level of emotional connection with them and work with Ms. Fisher and work with Mr. Kason and potentially have small group discussions to ask them, how, how do we change the words that are coming out so it doesn't happen again?
And Brian?
Yeah, so that was definitely a really tough experience. I remember it's the reason I ran for the board in the first place. It's the reason that change needed to happen. But I think that Albany has an opportunity to be a leader in this conversation and a leader in making sure that this doesn't happen again. And it starts with everybody looking inside and thinking about what things can I do? You can't just lean on the few black people in the district and ask them to solve the problem. Right? Because that's what we always do. Something happens and Vice Principal Pierce, Camille Fisher, Mr. Kason, Dr. Wells, Brian, how can we fix it? The truth is, the issue with the Instagram and the incident that happened, it happened, black people, we didn't do it to ourself. Students of color didn't do it to ourself. It was done to them. It was done to us. So the only way to fix it is to fix it from the folks that it came from. So you can't fall, it can't always fall on the black people in the district. It's gotta be the community as a whole and I apologize for going over.
Okay. Are you aware of a wealth gap among the student population that impacts student achievement? What supplemental assistance do you propose offering students in, in the district from families that cannot afford private tutoring so they can excel? And Brian, let's start with you.
Thank you. And I promise to stay under time this time. I think that it is really important for that to not be an issue at all. So currently there are families that can afford really expensive tutors. And then there are families that cannot, right? And so then that creates, right, this gap. It's a gap that we talk about all the time. The only way that we close that gap is if we provide resources for all students so that all students can get to where they need to be. So we need to take a look at the way that we're doing it. We need to take a look at it as a whole, figure out, well, why is there a need for the really expensive tutors? And then how do we work on that to close the gap? If we provide funding to some that need it and then not to other, there's not, there's already not enough money. So we can't just throw money at the problem. It's a bigger issue.
And Veronica?
So I'm going to speak to some of the things that we've implemented and some of the things that we hope to continue, I would hope to continue to support. One, we're very fortunate that we have a new program called ELOP, which is kind of filling in this gap already. You have to qualify for it. And it falls under, you know, having that lower income and then we provide extra hours of academic support and summer support. We have put in place tutoring programs where our high school students are matched up with other students and provide tutoring to them, mostly at the middle school. We have put in our bridge summer program, so I would continue to support that. We also have, you know, programs that were started, like the young men and women of color that have academic supports built into those and mentors. And so I think continuing to support all of those programs would be what I would want to do and really just continue to build it. We've also put in a period in some of our high school school days where students can get more academic support. So just continuing to make sure that those things are happening and moving forward in the future.
Thank you. And Dana?
So yes, I was going to say a lot of what Bonnie just said because I, I do think there are quite a few programs out there. Obviously the question, you know, leads us to understand that it's not quite enough. The one other sort of, I guess, help for school that happens that I understand is there math and language hours at the high school. But one other area that I, I should say two other areas. One, I do think that this is a real need and it is something that the PTAs could step up and do maybe more. I know that the program that is covered at the middle school is paid for by the middle school PTA. And we could explore if there is other opportunity there at the high school as well or expanding the program. The other thing I would say is that we need to address equity at an earlier age. I, I understand that there's, there's discrepancies with Marin, Cornell and Ocean View. And the PTAs, again, that's another place where they can get together and help kids at an earlier age. So hopefully there's not as much need as the kids are older.
Thank you. And the next question is, are teachers and staff adequately compensated in the district? If not, how would you seek to ameliorate the situation? Do you support fun, parents fundraising independently? And we'll start with uh you, Veronica.
Well, one of the first things that I would like to bring back is our fundraising committee, so that the board and the district leadership. Can really look at all the different ways that we are asking for money from our community. I think that it's a lot, and I think that it's, you know, kind of all over the place. So I'd like to uh unify that process just a little bit. Um, teacher compensation is not a district-specific problem. We have done so much to try and remedy this. And I think that at the very least, we provide a really fair compensation package based on what we can for salary. And our health and welfare benefits, which are very, very wonderful. Um, and really take care of our, our, our teachers. Um, in that, you know, we would have to be advocating at a higher level. We just passed our new personal tax structure. So that we could give our teachers raises and really stay competitive. Um, but I, I think that we have to look outside of our community of Albany at this point.
Great. And Dana?
So my, I guess, broad answer is teachers across the board are not compensated enough. Over the years, we've asked them to do so much more than just educate. And it is, um, there's, there's really just too much placed on them. And as we have cuts, even e- e- even if you get rid of somebody in the, the counselor's office, like the secretary is not there. And that puts more pressure on the counselors that are trying to serve the students. So every single change has an impact on the teachers and, and ultimately the kids. Um, I agree that we need to look outside for teacher compensation. We legally can't directly fund. The teachers, but I, I'm gonna sound like a broken record now. But the PTAs really do a lot for the teachers, and they're allowed to do a lot of support in and around their days. And so that is one way that across all the schools, we can do a lot to support them. You know, again, without being able to just magically give more money, which doesn't exist.
And Brian?
Um, obviously, uh, teachers are underpaid and overworked. Uh, when you think about a teacher, um, it's one of the, if not the most important. Uh, jobs uh that you can have, um, even if you're thinking about someone who, lawyers are important. But they became lawyers because they had great teachers, and doctors are important, but the doctors became doctors because they had great teachers, right? That's how you finish medical school. So teachers across the board from ACC all the way to the high school. Are um underpaid and overworked. I think that with some outside-the-box thinking, doing something different. Albany kind of being a, a leader uh in change, you know, we can find creative ways to uh make sure that uh teachers. Uh, get a fairly compensated for the work that they do.
Thank you. And this will be the last question before you do your closing statements. Do you think the district has done well serving students with special needs and along the academically talented spectrum? What improvements can be made? Also, what policies should be in place when students are subjected to bullying and leave the district? And can we start with you, Brian?
My, sorry, can I just ask, those are two very separate questions. Would it be possible to answer that as two, maybe in two one-minute sections?
Um, you know what, since we're coming to the close, normally I would say yes, but let's just try to see if you can't do a little of each, okay? And we'll be aware that it, it was a bigger question, and maybe in your closing statement, you can tease it out a bit, okay? Thank you.
Um, yeah, so uh for kind of the first part, uh special education, it depends on uh. What we're comparing it to. If Albany's comparing it to uh neighboring districts. Uh, then the special education program is uh doing, it's doing very well, it's performing at a high level if you're comparing it to other districts. But if you're comparing it to the standard that Albany holds itself to, uh, then it could be doing much better. And that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, uh, because houses that should not cost a million dollars. Cost a million dollars in Albany, not because they're nice, but because the educa- is a high-performing district, right? And so everybody should be performing at a high level, so there's work to be done. In terms of bullying, we're not doing a good job with bullying. People are bullied way too often. There are specific groups that are bullied more than others. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. I will touch on that a little bit more in my closing statement.
Thank you. And Veronica, do your best.
Um, well, I have to say that with the hiring of our Director of Special Education, Brian Biggs, I think that we have made some huge improvements. On what we're providing for our students um in our special education programs. I think there's always room to improve those, and we keep pushing for more of a co-teaching model in our district, which is what I would really like to see. Where we are fully working on that inclusion model and um more support in both of our classroom styles. And uh improving that least restrictive environment for all students. Um, in terms of bullying, you know, I think that this is, this is really an issue everywhere. And we're starting to see it in sort of more subtle ways and that are coming into our schools and into our classrooms, and there's just more and more for us to handle. So I think just continuing to keep those conversations out there in the forefront. And again, you know, just really thinking about the ramifications of our actions and reminding students of those. Um, is the best that we can do and continuing to keep our social and emotional um programs in place.
Great. And Dana?
Um, so on the special ed front, I, I understand and I, um, that we really just don't have. The funding to support the requirements that are coming down from the federal government, which I think. By, by default, then we're not meeting what we need to do, and I hear it in the community. And it's, 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 it's sad and, and it's hard. Um, so outside of actually working with the SELPA. At the, uh, the Albany Disability Squad, and again, looking for funding outside of our district, which I think has to happen. Um, we need to do a really good job retaining the teachers that we do have, um, because losing them, the onboarding becomes really challenging. We need to train the general teachers, not to put more on them, but just to give them some tools and skills to help with that partnership. Um, and if possible, look at efficiencies in the overall program of getting a 504 and IEP. There's, I can envision there'd be some ways to sort of help streamline that a little bit and make it easier for those involved. And I'm sorry, I might have time.
Okay. And now we're going to give you each two minutes for the closing statement, and uh let's start with Veronica.
Okay, well, we have covered quite a lot of topics during this short time in very short answer time. So I really appreciate the thoughtful questions that were raised by our community, and I will be continuing to think about those in ways that we can respond. To all of those, um, as a, as my time on the current board kind of comes to an end, and perhaps I segue into another term. Um, I would just like to reiterate that, you know, we've done a lot of work. We are all very aware of the work that lies ahead. Um, Dr. Wells always used to say, we're in a cycle of continuous learning, and I like to consider myself a lifelong learner. So I'm always thinking about ways that we can reassess or bring a better outcome for all of our students. Um, if you elect me, I'm a person who will always put the needs of our kids first and foremost. They are the reason that we're all here. Their spaces are very important to me. The adults that they interact with are very important to me. And just their overall experience is just really critical. Um, that for that, I'd like to streamline how we do some of the other things in our district and really help make our processes more efficient and effective. So that we can spend more of our time focusing on the actual impacts on our students. And, you know, what we can make happen for them. I think that with a little bit more work, um, after we get through all of these transitions. That our district is actually really moving in an amazing direction, and we will see a lot of positive outcomes. Um, as we sort of finalize this shift in a new direction, and I look forward to helping. Uh, bring us to that sort of next step of our learning process. I'm gonna end there.
Thank you. And Dana, your closing statement?
Yeah, so I am a, a huge fan of Albany. Um, I've spent the last ten years volunteering, as I mentioned, in a lot of different capacities. And um, I am excited for the opportunity to transition into a different role and, and serving the teachers and the students. Um, but besides my volunteering, I, I actually think that my greatest strength that I bring um is my professional experience. I, in my roles as Director of Integration at both Clorox and Autodesk, I had to lead cross-functional teams through complex mergers. It involved developing strategies and problem-solving. I was negotiating across different departments and managing budgets and communication. Those are all things that I think we really need to focus on right now. Um, my ultimate goal doing that was to ensure that the blended organizations not just merge successfully, but really thrived. I brought those skills with me when I went to the PTA. It was, I mentioned, it was the first year after the schools reopened, and it was a hard time. The community was a little broken, kids were, obviously, everybody was struggling quite a bit. Um, I use those skills to, to help bring the community together. Um, and when I led the PTA, we increased our membership, and community involvement is just so important. Um, we launched the event that I mentioned, um, we remodeled multiple offices for the teachers at, at AMS. We got a lot of parents involved in doing that, the staff room, the counselor's office, even the front office. And then in the end, we, we also redid the garden, which is a huge um beautiful outdoor space. So I, I feel like I was able to bring those skills and help the community thrive in that role. And I'm really looking forward to having the opportunity to, to do the same if I'm elected to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian, can you give us your closing statement, please?
Absolutely. Um, first, I'd like to uh thank you for the invite. Uh, I've really uh enjoyed being here and listening to everyone's answers. Um, I've been in the district for a while now. Um, I have. As students um at every campus except for Cornell. Um, and so uh during my time on the board, I just went and volunteered at Cornell, uh, cause it was the only school that I didn't have uh experience with. Um, and so, uh, you know, having students at ACC, Oceanview, Marin, the middle school and the high school, really allows me to be. Um, there and kind of figuring out what's going on, um, talking to folks and um, talking to everybody, right? Um, sometimes I'm arguing with Nick, um, the custodian about uh football, uh, or I'm, you know, talking to principal. You know, and trying, I'm trying to understand, you know, why things, you know, are the way they are. Um, so I think it's important to, you know, be involved uh in the, in all of the processes. So that you can, you know, uh, make informed decisions. Uh, when thinking about, you know, uh, being on the board, uh, I think that it's uh really uh important. Uh, to be a leader. Um, and having um tough conversations and making uh tough decisions. Uh, it's not easy. It's easy to say, it's, it's easy to, but it's not easy to actually implement. Uh, Albany has an opportunity uh to be a leader um to other districts. Um, to uh be unique in the decision-making, to think outside the box. Uh, and to implement things that uh other districts uh will adopt, uh, that will uh make the world a better place. Uh, and if I'm elected, I'd like to continue that work.
We know some of you have not had your particular questions addressed. The screeners combined similar questions of general interest to the audience in the limited time we have. We hope that you will contact the candidates directly for additional information. Your local leagues also participate in Vote 411, an online collection of candidates' information. We encourage you to view the candidates' resumes, platforms, and positions there. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation, since you last, last registered, you will need to re-register. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, which is SOS.ca.gov. It's secure and easy, and the deadline to register to vote online is October twenty-first. Voters may also register to vote on Election Day and vote provisionally. Ballots will begin to be mailed out on October seventh. You can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot in an official Alameda County ballot drop box. Whatever you choose, please remember to cast your ballot on or before Election Day, November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you to the candidates for participating this evening. Thank you for taking time to become an educated voter. We've ha- also had many volunteers participating, and we want to thank the volunteers from League of Women Voters for their help. We welcome any of you to join the League of Women Voters in empowering voters and defending democracy. Please, please vote on November fifth. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.